I've lost sound.
Caleb, we can hear you.
All right, there you are. Thank you.
We will call this meeting to order on October 7th at 7:00 PM. And we will please stand as you are able to honor the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a moment of reflection from Supervisor Leary.
Thank you. As I was preparing my remarks for tonight, I was thinking how over the years, this reflection has changed. When I first was on the board in 1996, it was a prayer. And I've been thinking along those terms, heaven help us. Then I was thinking we come from a different perspective, trying to shed a light on some insight or something. And I'm thinking, well, if everyone continues to talk and work things out, we'll be all right. So those are my thoughts and reflections. And I hope this budget beginning and continues and we have a successful time. Thank you.
Thank you. So please mark yourself present on your iPads. One thing that has been brought up as our IT has been helping us with our iPads is that sometimes people are going out of the WebEx meeting, coming back in, and then they're not any longer on the setting for county board guests. So please, it's easier if you don't have to toggle back and forth and get on the Internet for other things while the meeting is going on. So if you can do that, that might help you a great deal.
Schneider present confirmed.
Thank you. So we will look at the Journal of Proceedings from September. Oh, I'm sorry. It's not working quite right for Supervisor Leary. Is anybody else having trouble? Because we do have a help here that can come around and help us. Twenty-three present. Okay.
Did you get Eichley and Beckfield?
Yes, thank you for that help. We appreciate it. So we will go on to the Journal of Proceedings for September 16th. Are there, I need a motion, please, to bring it forward. I have a motion by Supervisor Chilson, a second by Supervisor Wilke. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes of September 16th? Any additions or corrections? All right. All those in favor signify by saying, oh, we're going to vote. She's way ahead of me. Thank you. So you will vote yes if you approve the Journal of Proceedings.
Schneider, yes, confirm.
Schneider, yes, confirmed. Eichley?
Eichley, yes.
Confirmed. Beckfield? He's voting. Perfect. Okay. All right. So we have 26 yeses. I thought we had 23 present. So what am I, 26 three absent? All right. Thank you. All right. So the Journal of Proceedings are approved. Public comment. Are there any public comments? And I did not see any online. So any public comments? We will go then to the reports of the county board under 2.04.320. And we have a DNR award, and Director Esslinger is going to introduce that.
Good evening, board members. Again, my name is Rod Esslinger, Director of Planning and Development. I'm going to make a quick introduction to this next item, which relates to the county's involvement in the Green Tier Legacy Program. And we've been into the program for 10 years now. I would call us, at the time, we were one of the pioneers, one of the first counties that got involved in, within the program. And really what it's about is understanding the resources that we have and being, and how we use those resources in a sustainable way to better what we do and lessen our footprint that's out there. So I'm going to introduce Jill Schoen. She is our Regional DNR Director here in our district office here. She's going to kind of give us a little bit of oversight about the program. And then also Reagan Watts, our Recycling and Sustainability Program Manager. And then Matt Tyson, our Facilities Director, are going to also step up. The program is really operated through our Facilities Program with support from Planning and Development and Reagan's efforts. So with, not much more to do. Jill, you want to come on up?
Thank you, Rod. Jill Schoen, very glad to be here this evening. In looking at your agenda, I think I may be the lightest topic on the agenda. And if you don't mind, I may leave before you begin debt issuance discussion. But in all seriousness, really pleased to be here today. A few weeks ago, I had an opportunity to recognize Eau Claire County at a Green Tier meeting, a DNR-sponsored meeting, and I was able to recognize county staff for 10 years, their 10-year anniversary as a Green Tier Legacy Community. I provided that award in front of a group of their peers. I'm an Eau Claire County resident, so I'm really pleased to be able to be here tonight and to provide this award, share the word with the board as well. You know, it takes your support to make this happen. I want to say a few words about the Green Tier Program, and Rod mentioned a few words as well. But the Green Tier Legacy Community Program is led by DNR. It supports local governments and communities in advancing sustainability and efforts to be resilient communities. The department works to provide opportunities for like-minded communities to come together, to share their ideas, their lessons, their lessons learned, their practices, and to ultimately to improve environment and public health in their communities. So again, the DNR can provide resources, technical assistance. Oftentimes, it's providing a venue for communities to come together and share ideas and lessons learned. But again, the DNR can provide this platform, but it really takes the support and commitment from the county board and, of course, dedicated staff. Takes the board's support and dedicated staff to make this happen. As Rod mentioned, Eau Claire County was one of the first legacy communities in the state. They've been a member since 2015. And I want to share a few highlights. I'm probably preaching to the choir here tonight, but a few county highlights. Eau Claire County achieved the 2030 carbon reduction goals eight years early. It's pretty impressive. Installed solar arrays on county facilities. Launched an operational and climate action, operational climate action and resilience plan. Provides outreach opportunities for residents to learn about sustainability. Provides countywide recycling services. So not only education, but actually the services back that up. And in doing so, recently earned a Recycling Excellence Award for innovation in waste reduction efforts. So again, want to thank Eau Claire County staff, and I'd like to thank the board for supporting this effort. And with that, again, you're not only doing the right thing, but it's part of a Green Tier Legacy Community. You're sharing what you've learned with communities throughout the state. So we're getting some extra benefit from that. And with that, I will, I provided the award, presented the award a few weeks ago, but let me do that again.
Sure.
And let's give them a hand for all of their hard work.
It's great when we can see how things change and how we can make it better as we work together. So next, we have Mr. Alenz from Ellers talking about the 2025 debt issuance. One thing I would like to just, and I'll have you come up, and as you are, we are, that will be the last agenda on our agenda item tonight. Will be the resolution providing for the sale of this obligation promissory note that you are going to speak about tonight. So I appreciate that. If, we will let him give his entire presentation if you want to come up to the podium. And then when you're done, if there are any questions, we want to get all your questions answered. Please just jot yourself a note in your agenda of your question as he goes through the presentation.
Great. Can everyone hear me okay? All right, great. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with the board. We've got a presentation that covers this year's financing and then also covers some bigger picture financial issues related to the county. So I've also, for everyone, I've got a handout coming around. It's the same material as what's up on the screen, but for those of you that like to have it a little more close to hand to reference, and sometimes things can be a little difficult to see on the screen, of course, please know you've got that as a reference as well. Just as a little background, when you were doing the budget last year, so 24 for 25, as part of the budget, the county board approved an initial resolution for the issuance of debt in the amount of $3,845,000. So the idea was that, at that time, you knew in terms of balancing out the budget and covering the county's anticipated capital projects for 2025, at some point during the year, you intended to issue debt. And that's what we're talking about this evening. You did the required three-quarters vote back earlier again, last year, in order to approve what's called the initial resolution. So you've done that first step. The only remaining step to issue the debt is for us to solicit bids and bring those back. But the Finance Committee and staff felt like, because that was such a long time ago, we wanted to update the full board before moving ahead with the sale later this month. Now, the notes themselves are all in a single debt issue repaid over 10 years. But when we look at it, we've broken them out into two parts. We have what we are visioning almost as a one-year debt and a 10-year debt all combined together. The idea is that the one-year debt is being issued for probably more of the shorter-term asset-type items that you need to finance, but we want to keep the interest cost on that and to match up with the useful life of those times of items in the Capital Improvement Plan to as short as possible. So that's why we're doing a one-year payment on a fairly significant portion. You can see about $1,300,000. And then the rest of the debt is being paid back over 10 years. And if the board can envision, those are projects that, when you look at depreciating those capital projects, they're either going to be at 10 years or longer in useful life. So that's why we're packaging it together, and that's why you see that very large payment in early 2026, and then more regular level payments the rest of the year. And that's why that's put together that way. The issue itself, when we get the bids for it, we'll have, we'll get bids which, if the county board approves it, will be for a fixed interest rate for the full 10 years. But we'll include in there the ability, if the county board wants to, to refinance the debt in year six or later. You don't have to refinance it, but the county will have that option, either to refinance if lower rates are available, or if you were positioned where you had additional cash. That's a tough, we don't see that position very often these days. But if you were in that position, you could start making prepayments and pay the debt off early. Okay? The payments and the interest rates that you see on the screen, they represent interest rates about a half a percent above current interest rate environment that we're seeing. And again, the sale's expected to be a couple of weeks out, so hopefully the market will stay at this level. Or if we're lucky, maybe it will even get a little bit better. Okay, this next slide is to give the board a graphical representation of existing principal and interest payments that you have approved with debt that you issued in the past, along with the impact of adding the new issue that we're talking about this evening. The dark orange is representative of all the past general obligation debt issues that the county has. And so you can see the payment in the budget year that we're currently in, 2025, you're paying about $12.8 million in principal and interest payments to pay that debt back. If you look at the dark orange bars, though, the way your debt is set up right now, it's gradually falling between 25, 2025, and 2031. Then it's very flat from there going out to 2042. You may say, well, what is that? What's the composition of that debt? The portion of the debt going out to 2042, that's really the highway department building. That's that longer-term payment back on that debt. Now, because the debt is declining, as it's currently set up in terms of the future payments, the dark orange bars, as we talked with the Finance Committee about adding the new debt, the plan as it is right now is to keep the total payments, including the proposed new issue, at that same level, right around $12.8, a little bit more than that million. So basically, what you included in your budget for 2025, for this year, the payment that you will include in your budget for 2026 will be approximately the exact same amount. And then obviously, by adding the new debt, we're going, those dark orange bars is on top of that. But we still are keeping that trend of a downward situation in the total debt payments that the county has in the future. The only other item I mentioned on here is we've done some preliminary work with the Finance Committee about, well, what if we have other CIP projects in future years? What will that look like? We don't have that on the chart here tonight for the board, but that is certainly something we'll talk about later in terms of what would be the expectation, how would the board like to see the total debt situation as we move into future years and the impact of other capital projects that this board decides the county needs to move ahead with. Okay? Very quickly, the next chart, State of Wisconsin does limit how much general obligation debt the county could issue. That's represented by the dark orange line at the top, up here. There we go. And on the bottom then is the existing debt plus this new issue. So you can see the state's limit is 5% of the equalized value of the county. And certainly, you're well, well below that. I don't expect you to ever be anywhere near this limit. Timeline-wise for the debt issuance, as I'd mentioned, back in February, or back in December of last year, the initial resolution was approved, so you don't have to go through that step again. We did have a meeting with the committee back in September, the Finance Committee, to talk about what we're talking with the board about this evening. The next step was tonight's meeting to update the county board as a whole on the condition of finance right now in terms of moving ahead. And then the idea is that at your meeting later this month, on the 21st, the morning of the 21st, we'll take the competitive bids, and we'll bring those back for review with the full board at that time and take a vote on accepting that winning bid that day. November 12th would be the closing date on the loan, so that's the date that the money will come to the county. And in many cases, the money will be used to reimburse projects that you've had going out the entire year, capital projects that you've had going on, on an ongoing basis throughout the year. And then the other point I wanted to make is because this debt issue will be completed when you're putting together your final budget, that I know your ongoing discussions about, the debt component will be locked in. So we'll know the exact numbers when you add that to your overall budget as to where the debt payments, the number I talked about before, that $12.8 million, that's a preliminary number, but we expect it to be right in at that level that we showed a couple of slides earlier. Now, a couple of other things that I did want to update the board about is related to your bond rating. So as we go out for issuance of the debt this year, the county's current bond rating is AA2. And some of the board members who've been on for a while, you recall at one point, we were at AA1. So I think it was earlier this year, if I remember right, there was that change in the rating. I'm going to show you a little bit about why Moody's probably decided that the AA2 was the best fit comparatively for the county. But I wanted to give the board a little bit more information on how does this assessment occur and what are the key factors that Moody's Investor Services is thinking about. So first off, there are a couple of different, four different criteria areas that they really focus on. The tax base of the county is 30%. Finances of the county is 30%. Management of the county is 20%. And debt and pensions or fixed costs are together, it's another 20%. So that 100%, those different areas, they give an assessment of their view of the county. They're comparing you to other debt issuers all around the country. So that's, they're looking at, if we compare Eau Claire County with other counties in Wisconsin, with other counties all across the United States, how do they, in those four categories, how do you fit? And then that's how they determine where you should be in terms of the rating scale. Now, as they've looked at the county, a couple of credit strengths, stable local economy with solid institutional presence locally, with healthcare and universities having strong presence in Eau Claire County. And then as they look at your debt and pensions, relatively speaking, your lower long-term leverage, your debt and fixed costs compared to peers, other issuers that are in the AA category are credit strengths of Eau Claire County. On the other end, some challenges they see for the county. And again, remember that they're looking at this in the context of the county compared to all the other counties all over the place in the state and around the country. Fund balance and unassigned cash, as they look at the county's position in comparison to those other, you tend to be on the lower side compared to other AA counties and issuers in general. This is a little dated at this point, but they did highlight the closing of the hospital and some of the potential economic or fiscal pressures that that might put on the county. And then I did note again, remember, the financial performance is about 30% of the assessment that Moody's makes when looking at the rating. The other thing that they do in their reports that I greatly appreciate, because I think it really gives folks like the board members here, gives you some pretty clear directions of things to be aware of as it pertains to your bond rating in the future. So they list out a couple of factors of what could raise the rating back up, what could cause the rating to fall to a lower level. And on the upgrade, positive operations, basically balanced budget or better each year, that would lead to available fund balance being at 30% or more of the annual revenues of the county. Okay, was one thing that they noted as a way to try to get the rating up. The other one, material growth and regional economic activity. This one, I think the county has a lot of economic development activity going on. But again, remember, they're looking at you for counties all across the country, and they're saying in the AA range, there may be some other counties that are experiencing even more growth comparatively. Okay? Now, on the other end of further activity or situations that would cause potentially a downgrade in the future is an inability to manage balanced operations going forward. And usually, the result of unbalanced operations, you see the fund balance continuing to decline. And then the other one is if they saw substantial growth in long-term liabilities, and I think the biggest long-term liability is debt. Saw substantial growth there where your liabilities ratio going up to about 250% from the current at 112% or 112.5. They see you rising to those levels. Those also could bring about a potential challenge to the rating. Okay? Now, the next slide that we included, we were asked to try to give, to give the county board a little bit of a comparison in terms of another county, maybe in the general area, that's reasonably comparable to Eau Claire County, and St. Croix County came to mind and that. And then Moody's also publishes what they call their medians. And so they, all across the country, the AA medians for issuers. And then on the left side of the page, we're seeing some different comparable attributes that we could look at. These are all financial attributes. So revenue, on the top there, I've got you guys at your current rating, St. Croix County at theirs, and AA medians. Revenue, you know, I think you compare very well there. You're above AA medians and very, very above St. Croix County, which has one higher level rating than Eau Claire County does currently. Fund balance, the median is around $49 million. And currently, we're at around $30 million. So again, that kind of goes back to that point they made earlier about some pressure points for the county to be aware of. Unrestricted cash is just your liquidity, your ability to pay bills, to pay unexpected situations coming up. $82 million is the median. We're currently at 37. And so the fund balance and the liquidity, very similar, but they look at it a little bit different in terms of different attributes. Fund balance ratio, I put the letter grade. They do sub-ratings for all these different categories. The median is 45.7 for AA-rated issuers all across the country. St. Croix has a AAA rating for that particular component with the 86.1. And then Eau Claire County at the 22%. On their scale, that's an A rate versus the AA. So you can see where that pressure came in terms of potentially bringing the rating down from the AA1 to the AA2. That rating level on that particular attribute is really the focus area that Moody's had. And liquidity ratio is really a very similar attribute and the same story here. But we wanted to give the board members just a little bit more insight into why that action was taken, and then also a little bit more insight about, in the future, things to watch out for in terms of a further potential decline, or also things that could potentially get us back up to the AA1 level. So with that, if I may, I'll turn it back over for any questions.
Very good. Are there any questions from the group?
One question I have, and maybe this will get us started. When you spoke about management, oh, I see some now. When you spoke about management, so as we manage our budget, one thing I'm hearing you say is it's maybe a, or maybe is this correct? That it's good to try to have a similar debt capital borrowing annually? So it isn't going up and down and up and down as far as our debt is concerned? Or is that something we need to think about?
So, uh, it's a very good thought for us to, uh, talk about. I, I didn't go in, in the presentation, a lot of what are the factors for management? What they're looking at there, that is certainly part of it, is, uh, more of a, a consistent long-term planning approach. Uh, some other attributes is setting and adhering to fiscal policy. So, um, the county has policies on investment, policies on fund balance, policies on debt use. Uh, those, if you, and that's good governance, so doing that first step, having those policies in place makes a lot of sense. And then secondly, uh, it's not enough just to have the policy, you have to adhere to the policy. So those are the kind of things they're really looking at in the management. Uh, long-term focus, not year to year, but I think what you were alluding to is, is a part of that, certainly is a part of that.
Great, thank you. I have three people so far. Supervisor Leary, then Supervisor Fullstead, then Supervisor Dahl.
Hi. Um, my question has to do with the external effects that will be influencing our budget, namely the grants and other federal funding. And I understand right now everything's kind of just holding, but sooner or later it's going to continue and then the effects will be coming. And typically our expenses go up the harder times get. So we've only had a few grants that I'm aware of that have been cut, but how much of a danger is what's happening in Washington going to affect things like our rating if times get really negative?
Uh, one of the things Jason and I've spent some time on is, uh, you know, how do you manage everything within the state levy limit rules? So as you know, I think that, as the board members know, you, you are very restricted on your operational levy right now to basically net new construction growth in the county. So, uh, if you, you, that growth is not allowing you to do much in terms of adding and some of your other revenue sources that balance your budget overall, could be federal. If those are going down and your fund balance is either lower, those combined factors altogether can lead to further pressure on, on the rating. Absolutely. Now, if you were in a situation that you had total control over your levy, it wouldn't be as acute of an issue. But since the rules are the rules and you have to adhere to them, then you, you either have to find more creative ways, pass referendums. I mean, there's some strategies that you'd issue more debt, you know, there's pros and cons to that for certain costs that the county has each year. Uh, but when you combine what's going on at the federal government, the restrictions you have to deal with, with the state, uh, when you combine all that together, that would be a very good example of, of combined pressure that could further deteriorate the rating. Yep.
Thank you. Supervisor Fullstead.
Yes, thank you. I have three questions. Number one.
Whoop, just a minute, you went off. There you go.
Um, my first question is, um, you did not identify.
I gotta have multiple or it won't work.
Um, do you know what that amount of debt is?
I, I do. Uh, actually, when we talked internally, that question came up. Uh, they have, I believe 125 million in debt outstanding. Uh, but just for the group to, to talk about, they, they haven't been that high in a long time, but they issued a couple of years back, 80 million for a full redoing of their, uh, government center. So they are higher than, uh, than Eau Claire County. They're at about 125 million outstanding right now.
Um, second question is, um, we have consistently exceeded our own policy as far as the amount of debt payment to levy as a percentage. Comments on that? And, you know, that has to not be looked at, well, as you're pointing out, how well do we follow our own policies? We've consistently not followed that. So thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think that's a good example of a, of a challenge and, and something that they, they look at, uh, from the management perspective. I have had a lot of the clients that we work with ask that similar question. And what it's led to honestly, uh, is a lot of communities reassessing whether their policies are feasible in the, in the kind of current situation that we're in. And that question of, uh, debt as a percentage of the total levy that you have or your total expenses, in an environment where you've been in a levy limit environment 20 years, more and more governmental entities have gone to unfortunately having to issue debt for more and more things because that debt is one of the few things that's not subject to the, the levy limits. And, and the, the, the reality of that over a 20-year period is exactly what you're pointing out. The percentage of fixed costs as compared to your total costs goes up, and then that's when you're seeing yourself violating policies. So I think what I would recommend that the board do is why, why do we, going back, what's the history of this policy? If it's very important to us, what are strategies we could consider to, to maintain the policy? Or, and we do see a lot of communities doing this, reassessing is, is the policy the right policy for us? And so I think all those questions you'd want to have a good discussion, probably starting at your committee, but then coming to the whole board at some point.
And then the last comment, and it's more of a comment, but as I look at it, even though we're, um, we're paying off the 1.3 million in the first year, this debt is still costing us a 12% premium over the course of the 10 years. That 464,000 is an additional 12% that we're inflicting on the taxpayers to get what we're wanting today is that a-
12% of total costs?
Yep.
Yeah, anytime you issue debt and you, and add interest to it, one of the things that the committee and, and Jason had mentioned to try to, to bring that to a minimum, because it is the reality, just as you're pointing out, is one of the, one of the decisions we've made is, uh, historically, the county has paid their debt in, I think it's usually been September, right, Jason, that we do the larger payment. With this issue, and I apologize, I probably should have highlighted this earlier, we are moving the principal payments to March every year versus September. Uh, we were particularly thinking about that with this million dollar payment, because it's really shorter useful life. But the idea was, it's 12%, already, it would be more if we were doing payments later in the year. The idea is to try to get the payments as early as possible to try to peck away as much as we can on the interest. But yes, and, and Eau Claire Counties, like many other counties and many other municipalities all around the state, we're seeing more and more, uh, projects moving to debt. In an ideal world, the, the million dollars, if you just put it in your budget versus, uh, and make that work in the levy limits, you can't under the current situation, you have to issue debt. So what we're trying to do to minimize the negative impacts of the debt is pay the debt as fast as we can each year. But it's a real point, it's, it's very much so a point that we're having to wrestle with.
And I personally support the state legislation and I believe that, you know, that, referendums are the opportunity for the taxpayers to tell us what they want and, um, how much they're willing to give us to spend. So I'm not one of these that are opposed to what the state limits are. I know that you sound to talk negative towards them. I'm not feeling that way personally. Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. We have Supervisor Dahl, then Supervisor Pagonis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm wondering about the impact of being rated double A2 versus double A1. Could you comment or quantify that somehow in terms of the interest rate on the bonds or a dollar amount, how that impacts the county on a dollar basis?
Yeah, the, the, um, it's not, you know, every, the market conditions can make it a, a little bit different under certain conditions. But I, I would say on the very low point, a difference between a double A1 and a double A2 is maybe five to 10 basis points. So if you're, if you're a double A1 and you can issue debt at 3.25%, we're probably talking 330 or 335 for a double A2. Uh, but that's on the low end. In other market conditions, it would be a little bit more, up to 20 basis points. So depending on how big the issue is, that can make a bigger difference that you look at it over, over time. But just to give you a sense, we're probably looking at five to 10 basis points on the low, low end and 20 to 25 basis point spread on the high end.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Supervisor Pagonis?
Um, thank you. Thank you, Sean, for your presentation. We did the initial resolution shortly after we passed the budget. It was in December of 2024. I want to point out that it's now October 2025 and we're doing a borrow for 2025. So this is for the year that we've almost finished. And Sean, as I understand you correctly, our intent is to pay down a substantial amount within the first five months of having been issuing, issuing the debt.
Yeah, correct. The, the issue size is, for the reminder for the board, 3,845, but 1,300 and I think it's 40,000 will be paid, uh, on March 1st of 2026.
So that's four months from now. So I mean, think that through. I mean, it's a pretty aggressive approach to, um, number one, how long it's taking us to actually do the borrow. And then number two, how quickly is the plan to pay it off? So I think it's, it's a, it's a great way to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? This was very helpful. Thank you. I think we had very good dialogue. Thanks so much. We will go now to the administrators', um, um, budget presentation. We're, we're talking budget, we're living budget right now.
Good evening. Before I start, um, with the recommended, recommended budget, I do want to share a couple of things about the budget meetings and clarify some communication on where you can find those meeting agendas on the website. Uh, so I'm going to try to share on WebEx, if that's okay, Sue? Oh, yep. So I'm just going to share the website quick. Yep. Then we'll go back. Thank you. So I know there's been a lot of questions with the, you know, the, the new website. So when you go to the Eau Claire County website, as you see on the screen here, there's a couple of ways that you can get to agendas to find out where meetings are and where they're at. And, and I'm going to go over three ways with the group, just to share this. Uh, right now, specifically for the budget, right in the website, the second button over is the 2026 county budget. If you click on that item here, it brings you to this webpage where there's also county code, like we were just talking about where all our code and archives are. But under the third point is joint committee meeting dates and recordings. So I'm just going to click on that. And so for the 2026 budget, everything is now available for you to see the meetings. And there's a link to those committee meetings as well for each, each budget meeting right now. So looking ahead, you can kind of see how all those are scheduled on here. So that's specific to the budget. So that's one way to get that information as you're on the website. I'm going to go back to the homepage again. Another way is down below, there's the calendar, which most people are familiar with, the calendar on the website. And I'm clicking on board commissions and councils. It's, it's on all, but I'm just going to click on the board commissions and councils tab here. And then from there, you can see, for example, tonight, October 2nd is county board of supervisors. That's that top one right there. If I click on that icon, it switches and then you see the pop-up where the agenda packet can be found. That's this blue link here, agenda packet. So you can use the counter option if you prefer that. And then one last option is if you go under government at the top of the page, you can click on any committee here that's underneath standing committees. If you, so I'm going to click on Parks and Forests, for example. And if I scroll down, you'll see that all the agendas and minutes are available under each committee as well on their, on their individual site location. So many options to get to the information is just preference and, and going from there. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to share that with the, with the board. And so the, as part of the budget meeting, please participate in joint meetings as much as you can. They are recorded and posted to the website later. Um, but that's really the time to ask questions and get involved with each department in those joint meetings if you'd like to participate in those. So that's under the budget, like I showed originally. I'm just going to go back to that one more time. Way at the top of the website, there's the 2026 budget. And if you want to know where the budget meetings are, you click on the joint committee meeting dates and recordings. That's where you'll find all the information. So if you want to look at the recording for committee administration, all that information's there for you. If you want help to sleep at night, uh, or, or to follow up with something that you don't recall. Uh, myself, I go back to previous board meetings, um, for example, August, and watch the recording to, to remind myself, what did I say when I was presenting with, with Jason that night? I want to make sure I'm on the same page of what I said, so I'll go back to those recordings. So, but that's just a quick update, then I'm going to stop sharing and go back, Sue, to, um, the agenda. Okay, so in tonight's pack, it's a very high level, um, highlight of the recommended budget. So for those of you who hadn't received yours, oh, sorry, it's not, oh, that one. Yep, thank you. Oh, to switch through? Okay, I would love to. Yeah, thank you. So I'm holding up, um, your exercise weights here. This document, if you, you may have just received it tonight. Sue might have put some on your, okay. So, um, that's one reason why there's not too much information in, in tonight's presentation. I will be providing more information from a budget presentation later at our October 21st. I'm also going to be doing presentation with our county staff. But I just wanted to make sure everybody had their budget book. And in the budget book, if anything, you know, the budget message and the summary, um, are the very important parts to read through, and that's some of the highlights you're going to see tonight. Um, so those first couple tabs are available, you know, for, for the primary purpose of getting an overall review of the, the budget and as a whole. And so please utilize that. If you have questions, please reach out to Jason, Samantha or myself, uh, we'll help you with any questions you have. Okay, going through the slides quickly here. Oh, I gotta use the clicker. Nice, okay. So some key highlights, we'll review the strategic goals, talk about levy. Uh, you just heard Sean talk about the levy challenges and Robyn's question about that. We'll, we'll work, we'll talk about that a little bit. Uh, quick slide on employee and service focus, and then we'll get through some of the reductions, which is a highlight that we had this year to balance the budget, and then next steps. Someone too far. Okay, so some key highlights, just right off the bat, we had, um, increases for staff, one and a half percent merit increase and 1% cost of living is in the recommended budget. Uh, we have the transition to self-funded health insurance. That's also, you'll see that in the first part of the budget book here under the, the highlights in the budget summary. Um, we maintain contributions to community agencies. Uh, we had a levy increase of $931,000, uh, because of net new construction, which Sean just mentioned, as well as a TID closeout in Altoona. Some more specifics in the book. Uh, we, we looked at innovation and service level adjustments. That was, I'm going to recommend, uh, reference the 5%. You know, you hear a lot about 5% reduction. Really, the, the ask was for department heads to look at their departments and look at innovative ways that they could provide services. Uh, one of the guidelines was, you know, we're, we're shooting for a 5% reduction to help balance the budget. Uh, but we understood that, we understand not all departments can do that, but some departments could do more. And that's what happened in a little bit. So we're appreci- I really appreciate everybody's innovation and thoughts and ideas on helping us craft, um, this year's budget. Short-term borrowing and bonding for capital projects, that's as, that's in the capital tab. If you look, there's actually a debt and then specific, um, capital improvement plan tabs in there where you'll find information on that. We also, for the first time, created a contingency fund and transferred out of fund balance $3 million to this contingency fund from the unassigned general fund balance. Knowing that we're going to have some challenges ahead, it's important that we have a contingency fund there to operate out of, but we also need to work diligently on funding or, or putting funds back into our fund balance, as you just heard. So some difficult decisions ahead, and it's, it's going to be very important that we focus on fiscal policy and refilling our fund balance to meet our policy needs. We also have a abolishment of- We also have a abolishment of 2025 hold positions, except the Sheriff's Department. I do want to highlight that those still are on hold for the Sheriff's Department because of the constitutional authority within the Sheriff's State Statutes. One thing you're going to get sick of me saying over and over again are strategic goals. I'm going to really be bringing them up for the board because there's, there's three main goals here. Financial sustainability and stability, that's a, a large focus. A positive and rewarding workplace. We want to retain the staff we have. That's how we ended up coming up with the 2.5% was through innovation of the departments to make sure we could have raises for staff. And then sustainable growth through strength and partnerships, really working together as a board, policymakers, as well as staff operationally to work in the Chippewa Valley to look at, you know, what can strength and partnerships provide as far as services with, with everybody in, in the Chippewa Valley here in Eau Claire County, too. So the boring part, levy authority and growth, I think everybody knows. But if you're not aware, it's under statute 660602. Former limited to 0% or net new construction. And the two points below are talking about 2% increase. So if you think about inflation and the costs that have been happening here, not only, you know, just from a global perspective, but here in Eau Claire County, we are only able to add 2%. So just for example, 2.5% increases for staff is more than we're getting for, for levy growth right now in Eau Claire County. So a 2% increase in levy growth, even though that's the seventh highest in Wisconsin, it's still pretty flat with what we have for expenses to keep up with. Our overall equalized value did grow by 8%. So another thing to highlight is we are growing Eau Claire County. We are expanding. It's, it's a good thing that we're growing. It helps us. In other counties where there is no growth, there is no net new construction revenue that they're receiving. So, so it's even worse in those situations. One thing, you know, if you like golf, you know, the, the game of golf, you want to have a low score, right? You know, so if you look at our mill rate, it did go down. So we went down from 292 to 276 based on, you know, the total evaluation. County went up. So for, I think about a $350,000 house, or I gotta look here what I'm referencing. It's about $900, $900 a year. When you start looking at what is the impact of the county mill rate on a typical house here in Eau Claire County? Yeah, I just want to pull that up quick just as a reference. So. And I should know where that's at, but. So yeah, it's a $900, $900 is the impact to the average household here in Eau Claire County. I believe, let me look at the number. I'm sorry, I don't have it. I believe it's $250,000 house. I believe so. That's just so everybody understands that with the county services, that's the impact on the average household here in Eau Claire County. So when we start looking at other revenue options, you know, the talk of referendums and all that comes up. We look at the level of service that we're providing, if we have to lower that to meet our financial needs and, and our, our bond ratings. At some point, we have to be able to show, say to the public, you know, if we want those services, what is that impact to that mill rate or how much would that impact your property? You know, so that, that's an important aspect in the future as we go forward to review those impacts, the service needs and the recommendation from the board on how to fund those critical services in the future. Again, just in comparison, so you can see the Wisconsin median, the Wisconsin average. So we are in the lowest third of the state when it comes to mill rates. And in some of our policy documents, as with finance and budget, we're discussing that right now. You know, should that be our goal to keep our mill rate as low as we can and be in that lowest third of the state? How do we want to balance that out? That, that goes into the policy discussion that we're having. 6% below Wisconsin average. So I mean, that's, that's something when you talk to your constituents, it's an important aspect, discussion topic, to let them know that we are one of the lowest in Wisconsin when it comes to mill rate. Changing direction to employee and service focus, you know, we were able to help with the compensation raises for staff. We are developing the self-funded health insurance as well. That's another important part of what staff have been sharing with us as far as employee retention is having good benefit options, local options, flexibility. So that'll be coming out in November, the self-funded insurance. And we do have an education timeline for staff here in the month of October leading up to open enrollment, to make sure all staff and departments are aware of what the options will be and how each tool and, and benefit works. So we're, we're excited about that and working with, with all the departments to move forward in that direction. As far as across departments and, you know, collaboration, I'll share, you know, if you've noticed around the courthouse, there's concrete that has been replaced. Highway Department staff have been doing that. That's new. And if you look at it closely, it is pretty good quality, you know. So we're, we're doing some across department efficiencies where we're, we're utilizing existing services and staff to help save funds and be more efficient with the services we provide. Reinvestment of savings into sustainable services and staff support. So, you know, that's exactly what we're doing with balancing the budget is reinvesting that into the staff. So with self-funded insurance, that's the goal as well, to move forward, not only provide better services for staff, but then also, since it's self-funded, we, we own that we have more flexibility with modifying it to what staff needs are and investing in that way. So here are the department reductions or plan proposals that we have in the current administrator's budget. County Board, we reduced the county board training amount by $2,000 based on historical cost. That was about 5% of that, that line item. County Clerk was able to increase fees to generate additional revenue for 6,000. Facilities was able to reduce by $50,000 for utilities based on our year-over-year costs. Some of the green tier legacy work has helped with operational costs, you know. So the, so those investments do help out in time of need. And then you, the $10,000 from the human resources reduction, planning and development, $30,000. That's a collaboration with the Highway Department rather than hiring that out. The Highway Department's going to work with the Planning and Development Department. Positions and services from the Sheriff's Department. Those are recommendations from the sheriff. The Highway Department had a $75,000 in, in reduction for their contracted services. Child support was also able to come up with some savings. Human Services had a, a lot of savings they were able to provide too, as well, to help us balance the budget. Veteran Services, these are, you know, going from a full-time to a part-time position. That was what they recommended and they could come up with. Parks has seasonal positions and supplies that they were able to reduce. Register of Deeds, again, some increase in real estate transfer fees to help us out. And the Treasurer also has a position elimination and will be using temp positions there. So there's a saving from the Treasurer's Department as well. So in closing and next steps, you know, we're going to continue to monitor revenues and expenditures and then as well as monitor level of service impacts. So as we go forward and have these position reductions and, and we do know there's service impacts, we want to track though and make sure that we, we know what is that impact to the public and really develop a plan on at what point do we need to look for additional revenues as well as balancing the long-term capital plan and financial stability of the county to weather the storms ahead. So that, that's really the, the main thing I want to focus on here is health insurance. We'll be working on that transition as well. But really, it's about fiscal stewardship. We want to continue to work hard on that in the departments. We want to make sure we, we support the departments with their plans that they're providing and the administrator's recommended budget. And, and that's really the first step, I think, as when we look at strength and relationships between the board and our departments, it's building that relationship with them. So when they bring forward their ideas and recommendations, that we can support that and then, and then help monitor how we're doing with that work and, and to the next year and adjust as we need to. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the administrator's report? So I think the key is that if we can get to the joint meetings as much as possible, especially for those where you have a concern as you look through the budget, that will help you to be able to voice those concerns so that their budget and finance here, committee hear those concerns as well. So that then they can consider the administrator's budget. So Supervisor Folstead and then followed by Supervisor Goboy.
Thank you. A, a question regarding the self-insured plan. Is this something that does not require any board action? I mean, we haven't had anything come before us with this year. So I'm assuming it's budget neutral that, or it's just being included in the budget book and that's the approval process?
Correct. That's correct. Yep. And it really is to save it, to save funding from a 15%. You know, that's the whole goal is to save expenses from being fully insured. The cost increases of fully insured versus self-funded. Yep.
And I, I have not studied the, the book yet, the budget book, but all the potential liabilities are clearly outlined there as far as higher utilization and that, because that can have a very significant drain on fund balance very quickly if we. I, I'm assuming we're doing a reinsurance on, okay.
Correct. Right. Yes. So we, we are waiting for those costs right now or the insurance for a high-cost insurance and, you know, so there's a, there's, there's additional assurances that we'll have to protect us from that. That's correct. And if you look in the budget book, there is some information in the summary for the self-funded insurance. You'll see some details in there. You have time to look at that and then reach out with additional questions. Yep.
Director Shemansky, would you like to add any more?
Yes. And with that, there, there is the, the reinsurance that we have. And then we've also worked with an actuary to project what our potential liabilities could be and based our, our funding around their, their recommendation.
And as I understand, we're in a pool that is bigger than just our employees. Is that correct for the self-insurance?
Yes, yes. We're teaming with a group of employers from Western Wisconsin to use our collective vine power to negotiate better contracts with providers and things like that.
So it's not just our 680 employees. So it gives us a little cushion. So Supervisor Goboy, followed by Supervisor Leary, followed by Supervisor Hirsch.
Yeah, I had a, a similar question to Supervisor Folstead on the self-insured. So there's not a cost savings right now?
Correct. We're, now, you know, the 15% is what we have in the budget, fully insured versus self-funded. Right.
Okay. And then what, uh, who's going to administer that or who's going to oversee that? What department does?
Yep. So there's an account manager that's part of, of the self-funded program. So we have Jay Counter. Alara Group is our consultant right now. But through Five Star Prairie, that they will be, you know, the ones who would oversee a lot of the program. So there's an account manager that will be reporting to us and that's Five Star. And so it's not us taking on that burden of administering our own insurance. We are not doing that.
So what department internally do they work through? Is that through HR?
Through HR, correct. Yep. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Leary.
Thank you, Chair Coffey. I have a question regarding concerns about security for our employees. It's getting closer and closer. Barron County, and then we had some individual in an accident killed on Claremont. It's, a lot of our employees are working in very dangerous jobs. And how much are we increasing throughout the budget so that we are covering everybody but?
So security for the courthouse or are we talking just the courthouse or overall security? Yep.
I'm, my concern is our employees, whether they're working in a park, whether they're at the extension office or in the jail or whatever. I, I'm concerned that we are covering our employees' well-being, which to me feeds into this self-insurance. I'm just concerned that we're making sure that we have all the I's and T's dotted and crossed.
Well, the, the, we want employees to be safe no matter where they are, correct? And in each, in, in the county, there's, whether it's the courts, the Sheriff's Department, the Highway Department, Park, there, we're out there in each area, right? So making sure we have a training and so that's where our risk management comes in and investing in training program in each area specifically for department needs. You know, the human services with, with their services are. So we are not reducing that at all when it comes to risk management in our training funds within our departments. You know, that's within each department's need to focus on that. But overall, that's, you know, safety's always number one. Our loss from, is down, our, our accidents and losses are down from 2024. So that's good. So controlling the environment as much as we can is important to make sure staff are safe, right? And that's where we, we, we do some, some drill. A lot of it's cybersecurity right now. October is the month of cybersecurity. So there's a lot of training going on there. So you think about physical safety, but then there's also, you know, the digital safety. You know, Iowa County, you know, the other, there's a lot of things that are happening out there. We want to make sure that training is, is paramount so that every, the documents are protected, you know. So, yep.
Thank you. Supervisor Hirsch?
Thank you, Chair. If you'll forgive him one more question about self-insurance. I, I, I heard you say that we're also combining with other, I guess governmental agencies on self-insurance. Have we looked, I know City of Eau Claire is also struggling with health insurance costs. It seems like an obvious fit to work with, to, to kind of merge with them in terms of like the health insurance. Has that been considered?
That is, but the City of Eau Claire, they're looking at doing that in the next year. Correct. They're currently not, but they're, they're, they're interested in joining the same cooperative that we are. Yep. So a little ahead there. Yep.
Good questions. Any other questions? Hearing none. We will go on to the next part of the agenda if you turn your page. First reading of ordinance by committee. There's a first reading for the Committee of Finance and Budgets. So you can read that through to be ready for next meeting. If we go on now down to reports for standing committees, committees and commissions and boards, you will see file number 2526 slash 055 from Committee on Planning and Development.
An ordinance amending the 2023 official zoning district boundary map for the Town of Washington.
Thank you. I have a motion by Supervisor Leary, a second by Supervisor Myron, and explanation by Supervisor Zup. Please.
Thank you, Chair. We have a petition to rezone 13.21 acres from AP or Agricultural Cultural Preservation District to A2 Agriculture Residential District by the owner Jeffrey Wilkie. This particular parcel is on Voight Road. It is east of Eau Claire on Highway 12. Two-thirds, three-quarters of the way to Falkirk, you will find Voight Road heading to the south. This is an old family farm of the Wilkie family. And they have on that area, in that area, the original farmhouse where Mr. Wilkie's children or his son now lives. Mr. Wilkie wants to add another house to the property in back that will be his retirement home. And in order to do that, build that future home, they want to change from AP to A2 so that it's compatible and it's currently dual-zoned, which they shouldn't do in order to be able to build that other house. So this went through the complete grouping, of course. It complies with comprehensive plans of both Town of Washington and the county. Town of Washington did review it and accepted it. And it is appropriate at this time to change all of that then to A2 so the original home can have one owner and there would be another owner in the property behind. There will still be a lot of. There will still be a lot of agriculture on that property under the A2 zoning. So we recommend at a five-to-zero vote that we accept this zoning. We'd like to have that by the board also. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this rezone? All right, then we will go to a vote. If you vote yes, you agree with amending the 2023 official zoning district boundary map for the Town of Washington as explained.
Schneider, yes, confirmed?
Schneider, confirmed.
Eickley, yes?
Supervisor Schumacher, are you getting your iPad to work for you? Okay. Would you like to voice vote? All right. Confirmed. The, yes, 28 yeses and zero no and one abstain. So we will go on to file 25-26/058.
An ordinance amending the 2023 official zoning district boundary map for the Town of Drummond.
So I have a motion by Supervisor Dunning, a second by Supervisor Beckfield, again, explanation by Supervisor Zook.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Coffey. This zoning request came to us from the owner Darren Stanton. This property is on County Road Double B way down in the southern part of the county towards Mondovi in the Town of Drummond. His purpose was to rezone 47.2 acres from A3 Agriculture District to an A2 Agriculture District for the purposes of being able to sell the current residence and be able to add a residence to the rest of the property, but still maintain as much farm as possible for his own use. Just as a note, you can find all of these zoning codes in our code, the A1, the A2, the AP. Each one has a different status as to what can be built on there or how many residents, if any, and so on. And that's why we make these judgments as to what the next status might be if these people want to do that with the property. So we're not losing a lot of agriculture land that way, although this agriculture land, if you define it by the agriculture I grew up with, it's not there anymore. This is generally field crop, but it's still agriculture, it still needs preserving, and that's what we're attempting to do while we give the owners their opportunity to pursue what they want on their property. Again, Town of Drummond, they voted on it and accepted it. Planning and Development also went through this and voted five-to-zero in favor of this request. We would like the county to also do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Otherwise, we will go to vote. Questions or comments? All right. We will vote then, and if you agree with the change in the Town of Drummond, you will vote yes.
Schneider, yes, confirm?
Yes, confirmed.
Eickley, yes?
Eickley, yes, confirmed. We have 28 yes and zero no and one abstain. Absent, oh my goodness. I'm not reading correctly. Sorry about that. Yeah, the words, the letters are not exactly the same, are they? All right. We'll go to the Committee on Finance and Budget, file number 25-26/064.
A resolution awarding bid for the summer 2025 in-rim sale of tax delinquent property, directing Corporation Council to prepare a quitclaim deed on the described property and directing the county treasurer to execute said quitclaim deed on behalf of Eau Claire County.
Thank you. I have a motion by Supervisor Jenkins, a second by Supervisor DeLuca, and explanation by Supervisor Pagonis.
Thank you. Which property are we on? Are we on County Road D? Are we on? Balsam Road. The Balsam Road. All right. Thank you. Got it. So we've talked about this before. The next two items on our agenda are when the county takes property from individuals who have, are delinquent for multiple years and paying their property taxes. The Balsam Road property was owned by Jessica Simbel and Riley Simbel. It had a fair market value of 241,000. It went out for bids multiple times. We kept reducing it. We reduced it to a much lower amount and then suddenly it went out on a bidding war and it sold for 227,500. So the county is...
We have a correction. You're talking about 65, file 65 instead of file 64?
I'm told I'm on the Balsam Road property.
Balsam Road is 65 and we're on 64 right now, so if you will...
All right, I'll go back to, I'll go back to...
On the, I'm on the printed agenda.
We have it written down wrong. So just tell me what you want me to talk about. I'll do it.
No, no, just wait. Just let Clerk McDonald get it. Wait, wait till...
Yeah, on the agenda, it's different than on the actual resolution. On the resolution, 64 is the County Road D property, and this one says Balsam Road. They do have the exact same title, so...
So which one do you want me to address?
So the County Road D one on 64, the official copy of the resolution is County Road D. So can you talk about that one for 64?
Sure. I'll talk about whatever you want me to talk about. All right.
Sorry for the confusion, so...
Brace everything you've just heard. I'm starting over. This is a property that was in Augusta on County Road D owned by Jeffrey Levassour. It wasn't in good shape. We lowered the bid multiple times. It had a fair market value of 60,900. It finally sold for 21,800. The county recouped all of its expenses, which include all of the back taxes and the cost of having done the taking and advertising for the sale. And that would be about $6,000. So the remaining amount, the profit that was garnered from it will go back to Jeffrey Levassour. It was purchased by an individual named Kevin Coe. So Mr. Levassour will get $15,930.
Thank you. So there is a mistake on your agenda. The one that is listed as 64 is what Supervisor Pagonis just spoke of. So if you want to correct it on your agenda and switch those two, if you, if that's important to you.
Which it's not.
So we are, we are voting on the County Road D property right now.
In Augusta.
In Augusta. Thank you.
Let me...
Which is actually supposed to be file 064. And we have a mistake on the agenda.
I'm going to, I'm going to quick change it here on the screen so that it doesn't say Balsam Road. Okay. And then let me just quick add that it is the County Road D property, just so that the title on the screen matches.
So Clerk McDonald's just going to correct everything so in the log it's correct?
Okay. All right. So now I added the address, the County Road D of Augusta. Okay. So now we can go to a vote?
So we're going to a vote on the resolution about the tax delinquent property on County Highway D in Augusta. If you approve of this, you will vote yes.
Schneider, yes, confirm?
Yes, confirmed.
Eickley, yes?
Eickley, yes, confirmed.
We're speaking incorrectly saying in Augusta. This County Road D is seven miles north on County Road D where...
Okay, thank you. The address, the mailing address is Augusta, but it's not in Augusta, I understand. Thank you. Is Augusta. Thank you for the clarification.
Supervisor Eickley, I didn't hear.
Supervisor Eickley, you said yes, correct? I thought I heard you say yes. Maybe I didn't.
Yes, that is correct.
Yes. So 28 yes, zero no, and one absent. Now, we will go to file 65, which on your paperwork says the file 64. And remember what Supervisor Pagonis said so far about the Balsam Road address.
This was, this was purchased by an individual named Scott McElwam, no relation, and it sold for 227,500. The county was able to recoup all of its expenses of 22,000 something. The remaining amount, 205,000, go back to the symbols as required by law.
All right. Are there, thank you. Are there any questions, comments? It's amazing about these bidding wars, nobody bids and all of a sudden there's a bidding war on a property.
The price three times and the first two times we didn't get anything and then third time it just exploded, so...
Yeah, you just never know.
You don't.
Yeah, I guess the answer is you keep trying. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, we'll go to a vote on file 065 on Balsam Road, Eau Claire address. If you agree, vote yes.
Schneider, yes, confirm?
Schneider, yes, confirmed. Eickley?
Yes.
28 yes, zero no, one absent. We will go to the last file, resolution 25-26/066.
A resolution providing for the sale of $3,845,000 of general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025A.
We only need half, half vote, a majority, a little over half for this to pass. We have a motion from Supervisor Schmeyer, a second by Supervisor Leary, explanation by Supervisor Pagonis.
Thank you. So note on the, on the fact sheet, it says this is the first of two resolutions, when in fact it's the second of three resolutions. The first resolution was passed by this body by a three-fourths vote on December 3, 2024. This relates to the 2025 capital borrow. It's, it passed unanimously in Finance and Budget. The amount is 3,845,000. Some of that, about 1,200,000, is considered short-term and will be paid off immediately in the first year. And as you heard Sean Lenz say, the payment would be in March. So basically, it would be a loan for approximately four months. We encourage approval of this because we're actually through the year and this is going to be basically replenishing our coffers for the works that have been done so far during 2025.
Thank you. Great explanation. Are there any questions, comments? Seeing no questions or comments, we will go to a vote. Yes vote says you do approve providing for the sale of the general obligation promissory
Schneider, yes, confirm?
Thank you. Confirmed. Eickley?
Eickley, yes.
Yes, confirmed. We have 25 yes, three no, and one absent, so it does pass by the majority. There are no appointments. As far as announcements, I will be sending an email tomorrow, but I just have a reminder for all of you about the budget meeting. It is a week later than it typically is because of the way that we're doing the budgeting this year. So everybody remember, and because of Veterans Day on the Tuesday, the 12th, if I'm having this right, we will be meeting on the 13th at 7:00. And if we do not finish in that session, by 11:00, we meet the next day, Thursday, yes, Thursday at 1:00. This is especially important for people who are working full-time because they need to ask off in case we do go into that next day. Yes.
Tuesday, Tuesday is the 11th, which is Veterans Day. We're meeting on the Wednesday, the 12th, at 7:00.
Yes.
A regular meeting, and if we need to meet a second time, it would be Thursday at 1:00.
Yes, thank you for getting the numbers right for me. Supervisor Knight, an announcement?
Yes, the annual Parks and Forest Tour will leave Friday at noon from downtown Altoona at the agricultural building.
Thank you. That email just came through and we have from Clerk McDonald, another announcement?
It's that time of year, so as many of you know, it's almost time to take out paperwork if you're going to be running for county board. I do have all of the paperwork available in my office. If you'd like a packet, that includes all the forms that you'll need as well as a map of your district and if you want a file of your addresses that are within your district. Otherwise, they are available on the website on this How to Run for County Board page. There's some links on this page if you want to download your own paperwork. So Supervisor Schmeyer?
When's the beginning date when we can gather signatures?
The earliest you can gather signatures is December 1st. So you can take out the paperwork anytime. You can turn in your Declaration of Candidacy and your financial statement anytime. You can fill those out and turn them in, but you can't collect signatures until December 1st.
How many?
You're going to need a minimum of 50, between 50 and 200 signatures is the number of signatures you'll need to collect.
So they didn't increase it yet. So the other thing is the Committee on Administration is going to work on some details that will help to inform candidates a bit more about the responsibilities of being a county board member. So if you have any ideas, please let me know if you think there are ways that we could prepare people better for this wonderful work we all do. So at that, is there any other announcement from anyone? We are adjourned. Thank you. We made record time.